Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming to our last meeting of the year. We hope that you get a lot out of today, and we promise to keep things moving right along so we can get you out at a good time. So I'd like to -- my name is Chris Yates. I'm president of Shippoa. But first, I'd like to thank Harbor Square Theater, as always, for letting us use their facility here. It's a great place for us to get together, and we're very grateful to them. I'd also like to thank IPE Insurance for sponsoring the breakfast we had out there this morning. So if you have any insurance needs, I'm sure they can work with you on that. We'll get right in -- let me do some introductions first. We have members of the Stone Harbor Council and our mayor with us today. We have Mayor Tim Carney, Councilmember Bunny Farzick -- Farzick. Sorry, I get it wrong every time. Councilmember Jim Gensimer and Councilmember Ken Beddick. So we appreciate you coming. We are also very pleased today to have representative from Cape May County, one of the commissioners. I'd like to turn the program over to Chris Campbell, who's chairman of our Borough Engagement Committee, to make the introduction and get this section started. But I would just add, one of the reasons we think it's important that we hear from the county is in your tax bill, for every dollar of property tax you pay, about $7 goes to the Stone Harbor School District. I mean, about 7 cents of that goes to the Stone Harbor School District. 43 cents goes to the Borough of Stone Harbor. 50 cents goes to the county. So they are the largest component of your property tax bill. So it's good to have some engagement with the county. So why don't I pass the mic to Chris?
Thank you, Chris. Good morning. We're honored today to have Bobby Barr, who's one of our commissioners for Cape May County. Bobby has significant experience in public service, previously serving as a fourth ward councilman, council president of Ocean City, community outreach coordinator for Legislative District One, Senator Testa, Assemblyman McLellan, and Simon Simonsen. He's a board member of the State Pileless Commission. In addition to his current services as county commissioner, Bobby also serves as legislative aide to Congressman Jeff Van Drew, chairman of the Ocean City Housing Authority, and is a board member of the Cape May County Bar. Bobby graduated from Ocean City's High School in 1999 and Stock University in 2004 with a degree in communications. He's a lifelong resident of Cape May County. So we give a warm welcome to Bobby Barr. How pleasant. Just to also share, Bobby's got some comments he's going to make for kind of 15 minutes, then we're going to have some Q and A with him as well. So if you think about any questions you have about county issues, et cetera, I'm sure you'd be willing to address them or we can back you to those.
Good morning. If you folks don't mind, forgive me, and folks in the front, I'm going to turn my back to you. Your face, your only is this way, since most everybody is this way. So it is my pleasure to be here with all of you today. This is truly local summer, so if you're not a local resident, please come in the fall season. It is the best time of the year in Cape May County. Everybody thinks the summer is the best time. Little secret: it's not. This is the best time. Stores are still open. There's no traffic, less people. So glad to have such a great turnout today. I thank Shippoa for asking me to be here. Be here. It's great to engage with all of you. So you heard a little bit about me. I've been at every level of government, so I kind of know a lot of -- a little bit about how a lot of this stuff works. So just real briefly, we'll get into some highlights that I know you guys want to talk about. As he spoke about, the county is the largest portion of your tax bill. So we thank you, right? We like to be good stewards of your money. And how have we done that? Well, for the last two years, the county has decreased your taxes by 2 and 3 cents each respectfully. And in this last budget, for the first time in 30 years, we lowered the tax levy of approximately $30 million. The levy was, the previous year, in 2024, approximately $160 million. This year, it was approximately $130 million. So the county is being good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and that's what it's all about. We provide good service, but we also tighten our belts, and we don't take your money for granted. And when we can, we give it back to you, right? And that's not often in government, especially at the state and federal level. They don't do that, right? So here locally, where we can impact you guys, we try to do that. Now, in county government, we have -- each commissioner has responsibilities in departments. So I have a couple of key departments that I'll briefly go over. So I am the liaison to the Veterans Department. It's my highest honor to be so. My father was a Vietnam veteran. He served in the Vietnam War in the jungles in the Marines, 3rd Battalion, 4th Marines. And so he was exposed to Agent Orange. Doctors believe it is primarily the reason why I'm in a wheelchair, due to that exposure. And so veterans is important to me. So what have I done? What have we done since I've taken over to Veterans Liaison? Well, we have upgraded our Veterans Office Facility. Fortunately, we are reaching out to a lot more veterans than we were previously in terms of benefits, getting them federal benefits and state benefits. A lot of people, if you've served in a military active duty or not, you are entitled to a lot of benefits. And so even if you don't think you are entitled to benefits, if you were a veteran, whether you live here or not, if you were a resident or not, you can make an appointment to come see our Veterans Office. If you were a veteran or you know a veteran, at any point, come and see one of our workers, make an appointment. We encourage you to do so, and see what benefits are out there for you. We get millions of dollars for veterans every year, and oftentimes, people don't think they're entitled to anything, and oftentimes, they are. The other thing that we've done in terms of veterans is greatly upgraded our Veterans Cemetery. When I first came onboard three years ago to the county, being honest, our Veterans Cemetery wasn't quite where it should be. So the director and I sat down, along with our administrative team, and we said we want to give this a major upgrade. And if you've been there, you know that Phase 1 was completed last Veterans Day. Phase 2 is soon to break ground, and we hope to have that completed by Memorial Day of 2026. And Phase 3 will begin after that. And we're not going to stop. Phase 1 was primarily the entranceway, making that a little bit more inviting, and lighting, and flags, and seating, and prayer garden, and really nice thing. And Phase 2 will be more the inner guts of the cemetery, and so will Phase 3. We have room for expansion, and we're working on that. But we want to make that a mini Arlington Cemetery. I actually went and toured, got a backstage tour, and met with Arlington Cemetery, and our goal was to turn that into a mini Arlington, and I think we're on our way. I also oversee the County Open Space Program, which to date, Stone Harbor specifically, in the last 10 years, has given about $2.5 million, maybe a little bit more, to Stone Harbor for various different projects. And I encourage your mayor and town council. We just revamped the guidelines of the Open Space Program to really focus on open recreation, and as I like to say, things that people can see, touch, and feel, right? It's great to acquire land where we can, and we should do that, right? We should preserve land and open space. It's important. But unfortunately, Cape May County, we don't have a lot of land. Unfortunately, the land that we do have, we already have much of it, right? You can't do a lot with much of it. So we decided, what are we going to do? And the things that we decided to focus on was really preserving active, open recreation, where young folks can really engage in sports and different activities, and older folks can have a place to walk and go with their kids or grandkids, really have a picnic or play catch, and make memories, really, because that's what this is all about, right? It's about making memories, and you come here on vacation. If you're a homeowner, chances are, you know, you retired here, or you worked your whole life to get here, and you're finally here, and you want to enjoy it. And open space money is your money. It's tax money. It was passed in the '70s. Folks voted on that, and by a ballot question, and the county donates a portion of the money that it receives through solely preserving open space. And in this past year's guidelines, we've also opened that up to preserving marinas and marine recreation. If that's your sort of thing, you'll know that marinas are kind of going away. They're becoming less and less. So the county has decided that we are going to try and preserve those, because access to the water, fishing, crabbing, boating, jet skiing, you name it, swimming, whatever you like to do in the water, it's important, right? And we need to make sure that people, the general public, has access to that in any way that we can. So the County Open Space Program is available to all of our 16 municipalities. Everybody contributes to it. It's the municipalities' money. Surely, before we took over, the county was kind of dictating to the municipalities what kind of projects they could do, what kind of colored benches we could put there. We were really getting in to the nitty-gritty of things, and now we're not doing that. And we're really encouraging the municipalities with the mayor and town councils. Those are the folks that represent you at the most granular level. They're the folks that know what you want. They engage with you mostly. I love to do it, but unfortunately, I can't get to all 16 towns of Cape May County all the time. So we rely on your mayor and town council to tell us what kind of projects you want for open space, and hopefully, they've done engagement with you all to determine exactly what it is you want, and we encourage them to continue to apply for that. We're trying to get projects done quicker. We've revitalized the process that projects go through. So that's briefly touching on that. Economic development, which I also oversee. We're booming in Cape May County, believe it or not. New businesses are opening almost every week. People are used to the season of the shore season, and then everybody kind of goes and hides after Labor Day, right? Fortunately, that's going away. Towns are realizing that, you know, March, April, May, September, October, November, and even Christmas time is a beautiful time in Cape May County. So there are more businesses that are opening year-round. Trust me, I get my picture in the paper. I go to ribbon cutting's all the time, so I know. We keep track of that stuff. And we're pleased to have businesses here in Stone Harbor and all across Cape May County. So the secret's kind of getting out about the off-season in Cape May County, and we're very proud of that, to some things, Stone Harbor specifically, right? I know you guys are concerned about the 96th Street Bridge, right? I know that's a big, probably big, topical discussion, so let's talk about that. This has been going on long before I got on, so you can't blame me for most of this stuff. But the county, since about 2021, has been working on the 96th Street Bridge. And where we are is quite simply this. So permitting in government is painstaking, painstaking. If anyone has ever dealt -- who in here, show of hands, has anyone ever dealt with the New Jersey DEP? Okay. Well, those that have raised their hands, you know what it's like, okay? I was a Pine Lands Commissioner, as was mentioned, for six years, right? I spent time on the New Jersey Pine Lands Commission. And let me just tell you, it is bureaucratic at its best. They literally, and I'm not exaggerating, they ruined people's lives. They really did. Overblades, overblades. The environment is important. We need to keep our beaches, our bays, our air. Everything needs to be clean. But sometimes, we go a little bit too far. And I could tell you story after story. I'll just tell you one real briefly. So I'm on the Pine Lands Commission, and the Atlantic City Airport comes in. And yes, that is in the Pine Lands designation. So they come in, and they say, "We have a bird, some type of osprey, that is nesting near the runways of the airport, and we need to move said bird. We need to move the nest." I think it was like 150 yards or something. So we go into executive session, and they say, you know, they explain this to us, and the folks there, they didn't want to do it. They really didn't want to do it. They're like, "Oh, you know, the birds, well, they won't be able to find their way, and they might get lost." And the reason why they wanted to move the birds is because the birds were striking the airplanes, right? And it was going to be a major catastrophe. So myself, along with a couple of guys, we raised our hands, and we said, "Ladies and gentlemen, what if this was you, or more importantly, your mother, your brother, your sister, your father, your friends, on one of these planes, and it gets struck?" What happens then? Plane goes down. God knows what happens. They still didn't move. The long story short is, they didn't move the bird nest, right? So the birds, that continues to be an issue. I think they saw it, I don't know. But I tell you that little sidebar, just to give you a little taste of what it's like to deal with the New Jersey DEP, the Army Corps of Engineers. And that's really where the permitting of this has been. Up until now, the Army Corps of Engineers, the United States Army Corps of Engineers, has been really dragging their feet on permitting, especially under the last federal administration. However, the good news is, is that, I don't know how many of you know Congressman Van Drew. He's a great guy. And fortunately now, he has, whatever you think of him, President Trump and Congressman Van Drew, they have a great relationship, right? And one thing that President Trump has committed to is getting, you've heard him talk about it probably, if you've listened to him, getting federal permits done quicker. Well, when I tell you that he means it, he means it. So we found out, just ironically, it was like Athens, just a few weeks ago, we are going to get the Army Corps permitting and the United States Coast Guard permitting, hopefully, in the beginning of 2026. At that particular time, construction will be able to commence on the 96th Street Bridge in 2027. And that will take, it will be a total replacement of the bridge. It will have brand-new walkways and pedestrian areas. It will be beautiful when it is all done. I can tell you that there'll be two phases of construction, one of which you won't expect, won't affect the span at all, the second of which will affect the span. That will take about two and a half years to complete. The good news is that traffic will not be affected during the summer months, and that's May through September. So primarily looking at it, October 1 to April 30, construction period, and which traffic will be disrupted in 2027 through 2030, when the span is being replaced. And traffic will be rerouted through Avalon Boulevard. But it's a minor inconvenience, so we hope, right, for what will be a beautiful, a beautiful bridge when it's all done. And I know it's something that you all have been waiting for. The other topic that I'm told that you all want to discuss today was 96th Street and 3rd Avenue. Again, that has been something that has been going on for years and years. I know that some members have talked about a scramble, right? And that is something that the county has been looking at and is still looking at, and a scramble is possible. However, our engineering staff has determined that if we do go with a scramble, it will cause significant disruption to the roadway. The roadway will need to be widened. There's some valet parking areas there that we need to either be totally eliminated or somewhat disrupted in order to make that happen. And so what the county has done as a result of that study is hired a consultant to look at some other ideas, to see if they're feasible. That will go on, beginning in 2026. They will issue their recommendations to the county, and then we will go from there. The county has initiated about $10 million with the Carnival Bay Bridge replacement project. We've done that, and we've also done a lot of paving and so forth in Stone Harbor as well, to the tune of about $10 million in the last few years. And so I know that the final topic that I'll touch upon, that I'll open the floor to questions, is shared services. We all want to know where we can work together to kind of save money and save time and get things done in a more efficient way. So how have we done that? Well, the county has issued a county-wide dispatch program, which offers significant savings to the municipality, and hopefully makes your non-11 service better and more efficient in that regard. Also, we have some maintenance agreements with your borough that we do as well. We do some maintenance for you guys. One thing that we are looking at, so every year, we have four mayors' roundtables, where we hopefully get all 16 towns' mayors in a room, or their designated representative, and we talk about various different topics. And one of the topics that we discussed at the last meeting, the chief assignment judge for the county come in and has pitched a countywide court system that, much like the countywide dispatch program, we believe there is. We believe it's a solid plan that she has put forth, and we believe it'll bring significant savings, millions of dollars in savings, to our county. But we need five municipalities. In order for the program to begin to be studied and begin to be initiated, we need five municipalities to reach out to us formally and let us know that we want that initiation to go forward. The meeting took place about two weeks ago, and so we'll see if the interest is there. I certainly hope so, because Assignment Judge Shepherd is from Ocean City. She served on Ocean City City Council, just like I did. I know her well. She was also the council president, just like I was. And so she knows government. She understands government. She understands Cape May County government. Still lives here. She's a resident in my town. And she's also interested in saving the county money, and I think that that would be a good way to do so. So with that, I think I touched on briefly everything that Chris had asked me to touch on. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll ask the first question, and then we'll open it up to the floor. I'd like to ask you about the Stone Harbor and Cape May County library system. Stone Harbor, as people are aware, has a dedicated library tax that collects about $2.6 million a year. And that money is paid to the county, and in return, the county runs our library. And it looks like of that $2.6 million that Stone Harbor sends to the county, less than 20% of it comes back to our library, and the rest is used in other parts of the county, of the county library system. Can you address that and talk about maybe ways that that money can be more equitably distributed, and more of it come back to Stone Harbor?
Sure. So first of all, let me just say that I am not the library liaison, so I'm not as intimately familiar with the library system as some others may be. But I will say this. So we view the county library system, much like we do open space, right? And that you send us the money, but it kind of goes into one pot, right? And so the county library system is one system, and as I said, everything goes into one spot, one pot. So what have we been doing recently? Well, we just, in Cape May, we just renovated the Jackson Street School Library, which was an historic school, primarily for African-American kids way back when. We turned that, and it was a great building, a great historic building, right? A big part of Cape May County's history. The state of New Jersey, along with Assemblyman Antoine McLellan, just instituted a Black Heritage Trail throughout the entire state of New Jersey. The very first marker was placed at the Jackson Street School as a result of the money that we invested in that library and revitalizing that library. So a good chunk of the money has gone there. We've done a lot of upgrades in our main library, Cape May Courthouse. That has needed a lot of care, and still does. And so we're kind of, to be honest, the library system has been neglected a little bit in the recent past, and we're kind of playing a little bit of catch-up there. And so I can only say that as we move forward and as projects move on, like Franklin School is all done, and that was a huge, huge project, right? And so I anticipate that more of that money will go towards your library as we catch up and get things to where they should be, right? And so I make that commitment to you, that it will be more equitable kind of as things move forward. So I hope that answers your question.
Commissioner Barr, I'm Jennifer Gensimer, and I'm the council president of Stone Harbor, and I came to your county commissioner's meeting to talk to you about our intersection at 96th and 3rd. And I guess I learned today that my request has been denied for a live test. The issue we have is that the county used simulations, and they made some really drastic conclusions, such that our road seemed to be widened in order to accommodate an all-walk. And an all-walk, for anybody who doesn't know, is that, you know how when you're at 96th and 3rd, and you go to make a turn, and all of a sudden, people are in front of you? What an all-walk does is that the lights cycle through, and no pedestrians enter the intersection. So cars would go through the intersection without having to worry about pedestrians. Then all cars would Then all cars would stop, and the pedestrians would, would have an all walk, where they can crawl diagonally, or they can take the traditional crosswalks. All we ask the county with the tremendous proceeds that the county will come from, from Stone Harbor, all we ask is for a live test.
So, so I don't think I said that your project was denied. I think that we, I said that it, it would require significant road widening, as you alluded to, and disruption to the roadway. And so your request has not been denied. What I said was, we are continuing to look at that, and we want to, we are bringing in a consultant next, next year to look at that, and some other alternatives that we will present to you as well. And we'll see where we go. So to, to be, to be clear, your request has not been denied.
So the county is still willing to consider doing a live test?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'm not guaranteeing it, but we, we are, we are considering it, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for your remarks. And the question is, does the county have any responsibility for, or more importantly, influence on the maintenance and nurturing of the beach?
No. No, that is a federal program. But I can assure you that the county has been working with all of our mayors, including, along with Congressman Van Drew. As I alluded to, the mayor's roundtable, at the last mayor's roundtable on the 22nd of August, beach replenishment was a big topic. Congressman Van Drew had a meeting with many of the mayors of Cape May and Atlantic County, and, and discussed this issue. And what I can assure you is that Congressman Van Drew is committed to, to getting beach replenishment. Beach replenishment was never really a guaranteed budget issue. Every year, it kind of, we kind of go through this process. And yes, there was money that was technically cut out of this budget for, or the, what we call the big beautiful bill. It wasn't the budget. So the budget usually begins this time of year. If all goes well, which God knows, it goes into effect October 1st. So that really wasn't a budget that you saw. That was President Trump's tax cut bill, and in that was a bunch of funding mechanisms. There was beach funding that was in there, that was reduced. However, that money is not, let me be clear, is not the typical beach funding money that we all see, right? And so Congressman Van Drew has committed to finding permanent solutions for beach replenishment. And so there may be some changes to the program. There may be more permanent structure with coins and all put in. Because I can tell you, I, I've been down in Washington with Congressman Van Drew a number of times. And guys in Texas, guys in Wyoming, guys in North Dakota, guys in South Dakota, they don't get beach replenishment. They don't understand. They look at you, and they say, wait a minute. You had a storm, you had all this sand, you lost it, and now you're going to spend X number, tens of millions of dollars to put the sand back where the storm was? And then we're going to wait where the storm, for the next one to come? And then we're going to do it again, right? So to somebody who's not familiar with the shore, it doesn't make sense. Now fortunately, President Trump is very familiar with the Jersey Shore. He's very familiar with Cape May County. He spends his summers here. He, my father, and he worked together in the casino business. I've been to the White House, you know, I've had the chance to speak to President Trump. I've been in the Oval Office. He understands Cape May County. He understands how important it, it is to do beach replenishment, fortunately. Because a lot of folks that are not from beach areas simply don't get it. And they think we're wasting money. So the idea, in order to kind of stop that discussion all the time of, why are we doing this? Is, is to look at, as I said, more permanent ways of keeping the sand in place so you don't have to spend as much money for, for beach replenishment every, every single year. And so to, to be clear, if I wasn't clear enough, there absolutely will be funding for, for, for our beautiful beaches in coming years, for, for sure. But the county, the county has no role in that whatsoever.
Thank you for coming. Could you spend a few minutes talking about the county's disposition of your act? And your opinion on the odds of it getting signed in January, by the way? The real action is very interesting.
So the question is about the New Jersey REAL Act. And what that does, in a nutshell, is raise the, so we have minimal, and I'm really condensing this down, right? But in a nutshell, what it does is it raises standards and a whole bunch of other things for building, right? So if you want to build something, you have to, you have to raise it up to a certain point, what they call base flood level, okay? So as we all know, many of our shorts, that we take, we take this very, very seriously. Of course, it's our way of life. If we don't, we all, I'm not a climate change denier. Climate change certainly exists to some degree. However, my, my biggest concern with all this is, is that it's based on science that has been primarily debunked. The DEP readily admits in their own findings that the chances of what they say would happen, and what they say will happen, by the year 2100. This is not today, this is, we're in 2024. They are forecasting something that is a 2100, and making, making assumptions that, oh, you know, we're going to have these crazy storms. And, and they admit that there's only a 17% chance that any of this will happen. And so there has been science since they have put this out, by the way, that has further decreased the chances of what they say. So what, what does this mean for all of you? And I, I'm really condensing this down, because it's really into weeds, and we could be here all day. And I don't want to do that. And so what it means for you is that if, if you currently have a house, and even if your town has a base flood elevation, like my town, Ocean City, I'm familiar with that, we, we are a gold standard. So, so we, we do so good with base flood elevation and stuff like, we are base, base flood elevation plus three. So what that means is you have to meet FEMA's base flood level requirements plus three feet, right, in Ocean City. And what that does is, when you get your flood insurance bill, it gives you a discount on, on the, on the, on your flood insurance. Many of our towns in Cape May County do that. So we take, and they're in various stages, you know, base flood elevation plus one, base flood elevation plus two. Some are at base flood elevation and do various other things. So we take it very seriously. We're one of the, we're, we're one of few counties across the country that have, you know, that have done this and that are the goal, they consider what they call the gold standard. So what NJPAID REAL would do is basically make, you know, it would, it would raise everything up an additional five feet in addition to what is already required. And what, what that means is that, you know, building an elevator would become, as we get older, right? I'm a disabled individual, I have an elevator in my home. It becomes more difficult getting in your house. Five more feet elevation means a lot more steps, right? If, if you're a disabled person, and you want to, and you want to get to the doctor's at a grocery store, you know, they have ramps in all those places. It means about four or five or six elevations of, or turns of a ramp, if you will. And so it's just not practical. It's just not practical, given what they require and what, and what they want to do. It's not practical. It makes it, it will make it impossible for seniors and the disabled to get around and access the community. Many of our homes and businesses will go away. And oh, by the way, if you have a current home, and you go to do your roof, or your living room, or your kitchen, or both, or God forbid, a storm comes along, and you, and you need to renovate your home, if you do more than 50% of your home, if you renovate that, your home, you are then subject to, to these requirements. So it is a massive, it is a massive burden on the little guy, on the homeowner. It takes a number of property rights away, in my opinion. Property rights are, are given. It's one of the few things we have in America that's ours, right? And so it's just bad. It would really impact Cape May County in a really negative way. And not just Cape May County, but towns and counties from all across the state. Democratic, Republican, doesn't matter. As far off as Ocean County, Monmouth County, Jersey City, they're opposed to it. This is just bad, bad stuff. So what has the county done? So we have, we have been fighting against this tooth and nail. We've hired an environmental consultant to explain why this is no good. Fortunately, we've been able to get some in both the state administration and, more importantly, the federal administration. Because you all should know that the federal government funds the New Jersey DEP, who wants to do all this to the tune of $700 million. That's more than a year. That's more than 50% of their budget. And so we've gotten an extension, they've changed some of the rules. We don't believe that the rules that they've changed move the needle all that often, all that much. And so we are continuing to fight this. And I think we, much like the windmills, right? I think we've, we've got a good chance of defeating this, because it's just government coming in. My opinion, it's managed retreat. And so, and it's particularly going to affect the disadvantaged, the poor, which Contrary Department believes. Cape May County has a lot of poor rural areas. It will adversely affect the disabled. It will affect the elderly big time, right? Think about if you're older, walking up all, all the steps. Think about if your doctor's office was five feet higher than it currently is. And if they didn't have an elevator, what, what that would mean for you in terms of walking and height and all that. It's, it's just bad. And so I hope that answers your question. We're doing everything we can.
I know they're pushing for a John Warren execution.
They are, but hold on, let's see what happens.
So thank you for, thank you, Commissioner, for coming today. It's been very informative. We're going to end this section right now. What I would say is, let's do the round of applause.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
If you have any more questions, if you go to the Cape May County website, you can find the Commissioner's email. Send him an email. If you have other questions, you go to the Chapoa website, our contact box, and send us any questions, and we'll try to get you answers. So with that, thank you very much. And let's turn this back to Chris, and we can move to hearing from our mayor.